Gentlemen, it's now 6:00 P.M. Time to begin the Roy City Council meeting for this evening. First item is a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Hilton.
Please join with me for a moment of silence. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item this evening is approval of the June 20th, 2017 City Council minutes. Are there any corrections to be noted or made to those minutes?
At the top of the minutes, it states that these are the minutes of the meeting held on June 6, 2017 at the Hope Center. Correct? They were for the 20th, held here in the City Council.
I'll make that correction as well.
I'm sorry.
It's already.
Go ahead.
Are they already so noted?
Yeah.
Motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Tonight, the second item on the agenda is very, very important to us. It's the swearing-in of a new police officer in Roy City. And it's nice to see that we haven't come in and not exited that.
It is. This is a replacement for Officer Hyrum Markner, who retired after 20 years here. We picked up Selena Campbell, who was deputy with Davis County Sheriff. Has about 10 years of experience already in the jail and working with the internet, crimes against children, task force, and various things. So, working in the courts. We're really glad to have her. She's already shown us that she can shoot. We should have her out on the road by next week and fully into training. So, we're really excited to have her.
Glad to have her here. Come forward. That's Amy. You're going to do the honor.
I state your full name.
I, Selena Campbell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Counsel, would you like to go from our newest officer?
Yes. I'd like to meet all of you. In the back row, I have my husband, Richard Campbell. He works for APMP. And while they are here today, we're excited for Roy. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. We want you to feel welcome at home, okay? Next item. Public hearing to receive public input concerning the sale of approximately 5.5 acres of Roy City property located at Parkland 1900 West, 4000 South.
Motion to go into public hearing?
A motion and a second. Motion and a second. All in favor? It's a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing. Is there anyone in the public audience tonight that would like to come forward and address the council on this issue? Seeing none? Counsel?
Okay.
Come on out.
Thank you. I'm Robbie Johnson from America First Credit Union. My home address is 7854 South 1050 West in Willard. We're excited about this opportunity and want to support the city in the direction that they want to go as far as the development layout. We've met with the City Council on planning, presented options, and, you know, if there's the cul-de-sac or the street through, then we'd be happy to support whichever direction that City Council prefers. Our preference, obviously, after hearing the public information and request, would be that cul-de-sac to provide that safety issue. And there is less expense to the credit union developing that. Allows us to give back to the community more. So, we will support whatever direction, however, the City Council chooses to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Anything you have.
Staff has looked into it. They presented us a plan with a cul-de-sac, and there are staff comments that you might want to ask for.
Sorry, can you speak up? We have a hard time here.
Let's see. Can you hear me better now? Or? We've got a new system here. Does that work? Okay.
And I think we need to go into that a little bit, because I don't think it was in the packet about, yeah, we talked about doing the cul-de-sac. And then I understand you talked with the city engineer, and they said that that might not be feasible. So, what information did you find?
Yeah. Here, in our code, we have that if you have a terminal street, and that's a street that ends instead of going all the way through. So, that fits with the cul-de-sac. It says that if it's 500 feet, if it's greater than 500 feet, you can't do it. Okay? In this case, I think it's 800 or 900 feet is what's being proposed. So, we can't really cul-de-sack that. Now, I checked with fire, and I don't know, Jason, if you can help out. Have you talked to?
Yeah.
Jeff had provided a report, and maybe Jason can help out with what the fire department sees. Because one of the concerns with the cul-de-sac may be the turning radius. So...
Yeah. So, that is one concern. However, we can make it work if that was the overall direction that everybody wanted to go to. We can make that work. Just the congestion in the cul-de-sac and the drive-through traffic will be a little bit more congested in the cul-de-sac area. So, we would prefer the straight through. Ross and I went and drove it today and looked at it and kind of saw how everything was being laid out. But as far as the fire department goes, whatever the direction is, everybody, we can accommodate both ways. We would just prefer probably the drive-through. So...
Ross, do you have any other comments to add?
We also, after meeting with our street department and the snowplow, they would prefer to go straight through it. But again, we can live with whatever you guys decide, which, unless cul-de-sac is big enough to get our vehicles turned around in, so...
Andy, can you go over again what the 500 restriction was? Is that a policy or what does that mean?
No, it's in our code. It's like 11-8, like Cameron or 401B. But it does restrict that length. And in this case, what's planned exceeds that. Now, there might be some kind of alternate access at the end of the cul-de-sac where they could get out.
Yeah, they haven't been able to do the part.
Pull it back into the parking lot, doesn't it? Again, with council, I think that's the staff's recommendation, is that we have that preference to go with it as it was originally submitted to you with the street going all the way through. But it looks like, at least from the city engineer, we got that that wouldn't work. In talking to Steve, maybe we can work that with its other access. So, whatever council would prefer to go.
So, are you suggesting we need to vote on that? Or are we going to let the plan come to fruition?
Yeah. You'll need to vote on it. What we've got before you right now, we have the contract as it was originally submitted. And that contract, there's, I think, we've got about 5.481 acres. There's a price per square foot that we sell it for. So, the sales price is around $977,000 for that first alternative. For the second alternative, it's $964,000 and change. So, there's about a $13,500 difference. So, if we do it without the cul-de-sac, the sales price will be a little bit less. Okay? And of course, it'll cost America First less to do it with the cul-de-sac.
I understand.
So, those are the things that you're looking at. But pretty much other than that, that's what we're looking at. But we do have that contract for you. If you decide to go with the cul-de-sac, all we have to do is make that motion to approve. And I've got an alternate agreement already prepared that covers that, should the council decide to go with the cul-de-sac.
Well, here's my point, if I can make a point on this. There is some resistance from the public on this issue. And we sensed that in the last meeting we had in the open conversation. But when the proposal was put on there, I sensed the storm died down significantly. And there was a calmness. They felt content. They felt like it's acceptable and will work for the residents who now have to live in that area with any changes. They also sensed that there was a safety element associated with this. And so, as I stated before, and I'll say again, if we can find a marriage, for a better word, between the city, the residents who are mostly impacted, and the owners of the property, or soon to be owners of the property, I think that's in the best interest to the public. And if that means we basically have to make a slight change to an ordinance, or we have to make a modification, if we find this in the best interest of the community, then I say, why not? I think the codes are there for a purpose. But if there's no safety risk, if we don't see any issues in terms of public safety as it relates to both fire and that, it might be a little inconvenient for maybe some of our vehicles. But if we can accommodate it, then I think we got, everybody on the same page feels comfortable that this is a doable option. And if it happens to save a little money, why not? So, if that's the kind of vote you're looking for me, I'll give you my vote now. But bottom line is, is that I say, go with what we talked about and stay the course.
Counsel, any other questions?
I have a question for the proponent. Last time they were here, they mentioned that they were going to put hedges and green along the knoll of the parking lot. You are keeping the sidewalk on that side, right? Yeah. So, this could just easily tie the sidewalk right into a serpentine sidewalk past that cul-de-sac. So, these kids could, won't go in the parking lot, well, supposedly not go in the parking lot. But, you know, I agree with Councilman Dandoey that, you know, we kind of reached an agreement with the citizens. They really quieted them when they saw that they were going to kind of go that direction. And I agree. If we can do it, then we probably have to do that.
Citizens went away last time under the understanding that that's what was going to happen.
Yeah. It would be a bad place to, a lot of them that aren't here.
Well, I think we approved the preliminary subdivision as it was submitted, but with the alternative that we could come back and improve this other way. But we hadn't had anything submitted to us at that time. So, and knowing that America First needed to get this approved, that's how we did.
And it was suggested, Andy, in the meeting, that that would come later, the design. And my comment would be, is that something that typically the planning commission would then approve and press now that the council has agreed to go ahead and do this? Or does it come back to the council?
Yeah. It won't come back to the council.
That's what I thought. And so, but if the planning commission, and since you're chairing kind of the planning commission side of that, if you could just articulate to them that the preference, I think we said here, was we prefer to go with the cul-de-sac and whatever configuration it seems to be suitable, then that's our preference, then maybe the planning commission will find the same idea and approve it that way.
So, let's, tonight, it would seem like the direction you're heading is to approve this agreement with the cul-de-sac amendments.
Correct.
Okay. And we can, if you approve that tonight, we can even have the mayor sign it tomorrow.
Okay. And the, we still have a comment?
Yes.
Joe Paul, 3727 West 5700 South. So, I understand the 600-foot dead-end street, because if you've got to take a fire truck down there, they're a pretty big apparatus, and to be able to turn them around is pretty tough. But is there a way to configure the cul-de-sac with the parking lot that allows them to come in and then widen entrance into the parking lot and out of the parking lot to where they can turn around in the parking lot, and it almost makes a big loop in and out? I mean, it did sound like the will of the citizens to make that not a throughway street. I totally understand fire and public works direction. If you're trying to plow through that, it makes it tough to dead-end in the cul-de-sac. But is there a way to open that up to where it kind of comes into the parking lot and feeds back out naturally? Just something to consider.
I think that's what they said, there's an alternative route through the parking lot.
Yeah. They can work on that alternative route through the parking lot. And, you know, there's other areas in the town that we have done similar thing. And then at the end of the road or where it would end, we put gates in there that are controlled, and we can maintain a gate if they have to. The fire department has access to it. Public Works has a key to it. That needs to be an alternative to look at. The planning commission can look at that also, I think. It was very apparent the last time that the people were involved in this process, they preferred that not come out onto that road, 41800. And the consensus was, when America First presented the plan for the cul-de-sac, the citizens felt very confident in that plan.
Mayor, if I could ask a question of the representative from America First? That'd be appropriate. When were you looking at starting construction?
As soon as we possibly can.
Okay.
And I'll let Jake speak to that.
Yeah. Jake Tate. My address is 2010 North Red Road. I'm a civil engineer who represents America First. To the first point on the cul-de-sac, we're happy to work with the designers to meet whatever requirements are necessary for the fire department to get their apparatus in there. We can adjust things to make sure that that's taken care of. That's not a problem. We actually have chosen a contractor yesterday, and we're hoping to start within a week to start demo of the park and get things rolling. We'd like to have the park paved before they shut the asphalt plants down in November. So, we would like to do it as soon as possible.
Would that be after next Tuesday? There's a reason for this question.
If it needs to be, it can.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Jake, I just got a couple of questions. I mean, so, if we do the cul-de-sac, which sounds like the direction we're going, we're having additional 400 employees that are at that location, 400 more vehicles, maybe not that close to that.
Yeah.
And majority of everybody's going to try to get off on 4,000 at the light or 4,200. That's correct. Those are the only two access points in and out.
Yeah. Well, if we do the cul-de-sac, there is no way to access 4,200 from the site. There will be no additional traffic from this development on 4,200.
Yeah. So, it's just be the 4,100 and 4,000.
Yeah.
And both employees get off work at 4:00 and 5:00?
5:00.
5:00.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if these kids get out at 3:30 there, if they were trying to head west, they're going to run into that issue there. We will, whoever wants to do the traffic, run into that issue there. Just know that we're funneling all these vehicles out to 4,000.
Yeah. From a transportation standpoint, it's, the cul-de-sac's a little more difficult. It provides more safety for the neighbors, but it does make, it forces more cars into less access points, basically. So, there is that.
Okay. And let me explain the reason for the question, and maybe you can help me out here, Will, too. When we acquired this property that we're selling to you, there was a provision contained in it, and there was a reversion. And it said that this property is ever used for anything other than a park, it reverts to the county. So, we've been working with the county to get that changed. And yes, we had a call that they were all in agreement, it should be fine. So, their attorney contacted, told his clerk to, they didn't have to have a closed meeting on that. And so, she was to take that off of the agenda. Apparently, she took that off and the action item off. They're out of town. They'll be in town next Tuesday. It's possible we could still have them sign it out of state and then ratify it next Tuesday. It just makes it a lot cleaner if we, you're starting.
You know, if, we still have to get under contract with the contractor, so there's a few days in that. And we'd have to have a few days to mobilize. So, if you're okay with us mobilizing to the site prior to starting construction, but we start construction next Wednesday?
Sure.
I don't think that's a problem.
That'd be great. That'd work, and it'd be a lot more convenient for Weber County, too, because they'll have a meeting next Tuesday morning. They can sign it right there, and we don't have to go through all this with a subsequent ratification.
Yeah. I think that's...
Okay.
Okay. Entertain a motion to go out of the public hearing? Aye. Okay. Come forward.
I have two questions, please. One is, and I have a hard time hearing you guys. I don't know if the speakers are very loud or my ears are bad.
It's a new system. It's up all the way.
Is it? Because it's hard to hear you guys, so make sure you talk into your mics, okay?
Okay.
There was a concern about parking, and I walked in, so I don't know if that was what we were discussing, that when it goes back to planning commission for site plan approval, that there was a question, because I think that the density is supposed to be 20 feet, and it was going to be 18 feet. I don't know if it's in your packet or not, but it had come up in planning commission meetings. Would you have that?
I was.
Okay. I'm going to have him speak to that in a minute. Because I think if this is going to be a go, and we've got a tight timeline, that perhaps the council could give guidance to the planning commission right now as to whether or not that would be acceptable. All right? And then the other thing is, is the, is there going to be a sidewalk going from the north to south, from 42 to the cul-de-sac area where people are going to be able to walk over to the library? That's the other thing they're going to have to address. Okay? So, those were the last two things, and if, you know, we would prefer the cul-de-sac. When we talk about traffic dumping onto 4,000 and 1900 is where it's dropping into, actually, I had seen a little more conflict with 1900 and 4,200 having the same access to 1900 at the same time. So, this might actually alleviate a little bit. So, it's a possibility.
Good point.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Oh, I did state my name and address. Got me?
Yeah.
All right. Jake Tate, you have my address. So, to address both of those comments, as far as the sidewalk goes, yes, we will maintain a sidewalk from 42 up to the cul-de-sac. So, there will be a mode to get up to the library. And as far as your other comment, with the reduction of the road and taking that out of the design, the extension of the road, we're able to actually widen our parking stalls. And so, at least on the west side of the parking stall block, we don't run into that problem anymore. We are still a little constrained on the two runs on the east side where the monument is currently. And so, again, that's where we run into. If we do extend those extra few feet, we lose about nine to 11 trees. And so, we're going to try to keep that side at the shorter stalls. But the west side, where the majority of the parking is, we can now meet because we don't have that with the road in.
Good deal.
Any?
Anyone else want to address counsel on this? Okay. Entertain?
Come on up, man.
Michelle Johnson, 4163 South, 2175 West, Willard. So, my question is, you're going to start construction on what we have as a park on Wednesday. And we've been waiting for three years for a park over at North Park, and we have a parking lot and a bunch of dirt, weeds, and mess. Could you address what the plan is and when you might expect for that to be completed? Is it going to be another three years down the road? We rendered the impression when our taxes got raised last year that that was going to take care of the problem, and you were going to go forward. But we still haven't seen much progress.
Mr. Johnson, Trouts, we talked about the construction out of the park. America First are doing their own construction, so we have nothing to do with that. So, that's on there. Trouts go in.
Right. But we're giving up a park for that. Shouldn't the park be completed before we lose the park?
No. It's all been processed. We've been doing this for a few years. The Trouts are going to address the timeline for it.
Okay. I'd like to hear that.
A week from Wednesday, we'll have a bid opening for the sprinkling system as well as the hydro seeding, Phase 1 of North Park. I am hopeful sometime in the week of August, 8th or 14th, either one of them two weeks, to work to have a town meeting to discuss three to four different playground options. We've seen two and a half of them. We've seen three, but we made changes to the third one right off the get-go, and he's back in design mode of that because, frankly speaking, the tie-in to some of the water amenities of that one did not work with tying it into our stormwater the way it was. So, we sent that one back for him to put in a better design that would make it work. So, to answer your question, Phase 1, we anticipate the Bowery Playground, Sprinkling System, and Hydro Seeding to be completed by the end of this calendar year.
And then what's left after that?
We would have the north side, which, you know, it's been my understanding that a big part of the way we're going to help fund part of that is the sale of this property itself.
So, what about the walking track?
The walking track, the walking track is in Phase 2. I mean, in all honesty, it is in Phase 2, but...
Which is, how far down?
I would anticipate we'd start on that next year.
And next year? I wouldn't ask that.
Yeah.
We weren't three years...
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it's right now unreasonable to say yes, that we would finish that part of it next year.
And one of the problems, and the reason I'm asking, is because you've got stuff over there that people are going over stealing, and it's bringing bad people into the neighborhood.
We, you know, we've done some pieces, and, you know, we've done some parking lots and cements and some restrooms and storage sheds. And we're optimistic that in this next stage, when sprinkling systems and hydro seeding and playground and Boweries go in, that it's going to bring about a lot of people to the park. That in our experience, bringing out a lot of people to the park is going to help police the park, so to speak. You know? And so, we're optimistic when all those things get in, that it's going to bring about people that play with their families and kids and enjoy that atmosphere and that environment.
The tennis court, we've got this all around, and people still use the tennis court. It just looks like a bad...
Yeah. And you're absolutely right.
We don't allow them to do that in our houses.
And you're absolutely right. And we need to get a crew out there to get that mode here in the next few days. And we will, I'll commit to doing that here in the next few days.
And I went to work Monday morning, and there was a man out of Salton through the sprinkler box that used to be used for the park, feeling the cardboard that was in there. Threw it in the back of the SUV and tossed it off to 4,000. That's just one example.
Okay. I'll make note of that, and we'll get better and get cleaned up.
And more we can do to better...
Oh, absolutely. And it's been our objective and goal to have that Phase 1 completed by this year, and then be able to finish Phase 2 by the end of next year. That's our plan.
Anyone else? Casey, seeing none, would entertain a motion to go out of the public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Back into an open council.
Second. Second.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now, back in the council meeting.
Mayor, I just want to make, have it be on the record that I have to stand for voting for numbers six, four, five, and six on the agenda.
So, nothing?
Mayor, in any motion to approve, if it's the desire of the council to make this motion to approve, let's just make sure we include in there we're approving that agreement with the cul-de-sac amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of Resolution Number 1728, approving the sale of real property to America First Credit Union and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all the documents necessary to consummate the transaction. Do we have any?
Mayor, I have recommended a motion that we approve Resolution Number 1728, approving the sale of real estate property to America First Credit Union and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to consummate the transaction to include...
Just say as amended with...
As amended with the cul-de-sac in that parking.
We'll have a motion and a second. Let's roll call vote, please.
Councilmember B. Craft?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Dandoyle?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, consideration of Resolution Number 1730, approving the development agreement between Roy City and America First Credit.
Motion to approve Resolution 1730 with the cul-de-sac amendment.
We have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dandoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Craft?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, consideration of Resolution Number 17-31, approving a parking license agreement between Roy City and the America First Credit.
Motion to approve Resolution 17-31, approving parking license agreement between Roy City and America First Credit Union with the cul-de-sac.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Dandoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Craft?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good deal.
Okay, consideration of Resolution Number 1724, approving an interlocal agreement between Roy City Corporation and the North Davis Fire District for Fire Protection Services. Any discussion on this, Chief?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, it's actually an interlocal agreement for paramedic services to Sunset and up to 650 North on Main Street in Clearfield. So Roy City has paramedics. Augen City is the other agency that has paramedics. So according to the local, to the state of Utah Bureau of EMS, it is our duty to provide interlocal agreements with other agencies. With North Davis taking over for Sunset, we had an agreement with Sunset, I don't know if you guys remember, that we had done in the last couple of months, and that's no longer in effect. So the chief of North Davis asked me if we would be willing to provide paramedic service to that if they need it. So how it works is everybody in Weaver County has the same agreement. We've taken this agreement to you guys, and we've had, we've got all the Weaver County, including Clinton, in on that agreement. So North Davis came to me and wanted to do an agreement, but they drafted an agreement. And I said I would rather just have one agreement that's already been approved, and we have that same agreement for everybody that we provide our paramedics for. So for us, if they called for paramedics, we would go, and then we would collect from them part of the state's paramedic funding for it. So it's not a free service, and that's all part of the agreement. I don't find, as the chief, any issues with it, concerns. It's not very often that we do go into Sunset. However, on a couple of occasions, if they need us and they need paramedic service, we'd be happy to provide that for them, so.
Council, any questions?
Well, Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So Andy, do we need to change this resolution, the state, paramedic services versus the fire protection services? Yes. In our amendment? Yes. On the agreement, yes.
I was just going to say, Chief, Jay, I sent you all a series of questions. You answered them excellent. I understand now a little bit better, because I asked the same question about whether or not we were also providing fire with this agreement. The answer was not this agreement, we already had agreement in place, and so you answered that, and it makes it very helpful, so thanks for the feedback.
Okay, any other questions, Council? Not with entertaining motion, consideration of Resolution 1724.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 1724, approving an interlocal agreement between Roy City Corporation and North Davis Fire District for Paramedic Services.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Dandoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Craft?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of Resolution Number 1727, approving ambulance transportation rates and changes or charges.
Jake, yep. Hello again, Mayor, Council. So every year, the state evaluates its rates and fees, and it's about every July, so the state did look at it, and it looks like they're going to increase the intermediate by $51 and the paramedic unit by $75. All the fire agencies and ambulance providers look at this, and we just kind of follow what the state recommendations are. This is not something that Roy City goes out and increases on its own. This is all part of the Bureau, so I recommend that we just follow what the state's recommendations are, and that's it.
Council, any questions? Entertain a motion, consideration of Resolution Number 1727?
Mayor, I'd like to make a point. We approve Resolution Number 1727, approving the ambulance transportation rates and charges.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Craft?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Dandoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, consideration of Resolution Number 1725-29, approving a contract with D&amp;J Grading for the 4900 South Waterline Replacement Project.
Mayor, Council, December, well, December, July, I'm getting a bid opening for this waterline. Three contractors bid on it with the low bid being D&amp;J Grading for a price of $179,500 and $1.60. Just coming to ask you to put that contract with them. Do you have any questions on it?
Well, I just have one, Ross, if you can help us. Unlike other ones you've had, this appears to be the first time you've done business with this company, is that correct?
Yes, this is the first time. We've checked the preferences, and we've had really positive preferences from other contractors, even contractors who go for us, who have really good, State of Parsons recommended them also.
Okay, so you feel comfortable that they'll be able to deliver?
Under the local, they're down there by the being a lot of the viewings and so, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion?
Motion to approve Resolution 1729, approving a contract with D&amp;J Grading for 4900 South Waterline Replacement Project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Dandoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Craft?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, consideration approval of alcoholic beverage license for Ocean Mark located at 5651 South, 1900 West.
Yeah, I've got staff to get all their checks, requirements, fire, police, get all the background.
Everybody ready to go with this?
Ready to go.
Entertain a motion. Of an alcoholic beverage license located at 5651 South, 1900 West.
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, fiscal year 2018 beautification committee focus discussion.
Does it have to be a tag team effort between me and Councilmember Yeoman? So we just wanted to give the council an update of what the beautification committee has been doing and is planning on doing for fiscal year 2018, just get your input on the items that are on there. The committee's been in place for a few years now, and some of the things that we've taken care of is putting lights along 1900 West. We've put the electronic messaging board out front here in the municipal building, worked on the waterfall at Riverdale Road, and designed and placed seasonal banners on the streetlight poles, and also put some flowers in around the EMC sign in the Riverdale Road. So what we're looking to do for this future year is to finish off the waterfall project over there at Harmon's. They've got all the brickwork done, and they're trying to get the electricity in there and get the waterfall pumps and everything in there and the water going, and then the landscaping to go on there. We're ordering three metal signs to be positioned on the roundabouts, two on 4400 South and Airport Road, and one on the corner of 4,000 South and 2175 West. And we just got a little picture in there of what they should look like for you. We are going to manufacture and place 12 historical markers throughout the city of various sites. They should include items such as the first home, first store, first post office, a myriad of different things. Councilmember B. Craft can expand on that a little bit if you'd like her to. We've got a lot of green electrical boxes along 1900 West. We're going to wrap those with some vinyl. We'll have a picture on there to depict various things, just to make them look a little better than the green boxes there. I think there's about six of them. Ross was counting in his head, so we think there's about six along 1900 West that would be put there. We're going to continue on making some additional banners for the different seasons. We've got to produce additional ones since we've put new holes in with the old banners that we've already got, but we plan on making some new items there. We're going to continue on with the streetlights from the south end of town, from 6,000 South to the end of the border by Sunset, and also we're going to put in about eight, I see nine that go from 4,000 South of condominiums on the east side of the road down there. One thing we did talk about but didn't really have the funding for was maybe to put the streetlights around North Park, North Park and the school and the library and up around where America First is putting their construction in. It might be nice at some point in time to have those around. We need some help from the RDA to fund those items, so that might be something for consideration. I know there's some economic development items that you guys want to spend that RDA money on, but maybe in the future to think about allocating a little bit of that to put some lights over there, it might be kind of nice.
Yeah, I think we can just discuss that now. Use RDA funds, let's go ahead and get that done. But what are the planning projects, rest of council?
Well, I think you have to have the RDA meeting, don't we? Have that more...
Yeah, we'd have to put a budget together to do that, and you have to prove that, so it might be direction to just maybe look to do that.
Well, I think it's good, let's have that conversation, because I think, here's my only concern I have with using RDA funds. I think we're on the cusp of basically bringing businesses into Roy. I mean, at some point in time, things are just going to start giving, and when they give, Roy City's got to have some funds available. Now, this council may feel comfortable, I'm not sure I do, but about going ahead and incentivizing business to come in by taking some tax break. I'm not so sure I'm ready for that at this moment, but the point I want to suggest is, is that there is some seed money, that we can do some things using RDA money, and as was explained during the last RDA fund meeting we had, that RDA money can be moved within each of the RDAs. And so if we need to do a little something down towards Albertson's, we have that capability. If we need to do a little bit more and pull some money from that particular RDA area up to where the library is, we could do that. So there is some flexibility. But in my mind's eye, if we're going to be competitive, Roy City's got to step up, and more than likely is going to have to find ways by which we can offer a developer to enhance a particular area, particularly like light areas that we got, and we have a couple of those within the city. This money is really primed for that. May I make an observation and maybe an option here? I'm not so sure when it comes to the development, that beautification efforts, that we should do that in isolation from the Economic Development Committee. These are two committees that, in all practicality, are working towards the same goal. If I understand, the purpose then of beautification is make it attractive, not just for the residents, but also for business, which is perfect. We've already heard from the mayor in closed-door conversation, that he's getting a lot of businesses liking these efforts that we're putting forth. If we could champion then, the Economic Development and the Beautification Committee, and have a common objective, where we're taking a part of that action and they're taking a part of action, we could really make some great things happen. And that money then could be used, okay, collectively, to achieve what we want to achieve. So I think personally, I'm open to the idea of looking at RDA money, but it needs to be in concert to where the Economic Development Committee is also trying to use that money to enhance, to bring businesses in. And I'd like that to be part of that conversation, to make sure that we're working this in concert rather than just simply says a pool of money sitting there, wants to go ahead and just do beautification, so.
Well, and I think part of the reason we wanted to bring this forward is for everybody to understand what the beautification committee is doing, and maybe there needs to be some joint meetings between Economic Development and Beautification to have those conversations and see what might, you know, work to come together on those things. And I think that's, this is the start of trying to get some information to the whole council and your ideas.
Yeah, and I appreciate, Kathy, the reality is, I didn't read that in the information it was given, so I just simply thought it would really be in our best interest if these two committees were locked, stepped together to a common goal. And if we do find that, if we have a partner, a business partner willing to come in, and we were to share that with the Beautification Committee, they could be a significant influence of how that property, at least the Roy City property around there, could be influenced as we're negotiating with the developer, just talks about bringing businesses in. And I think that'd be a great marriage between the two to ensure that we're doing it right. Otherwise, my concern would be, as was eloquently stated by a member of the Beautification Committee, they don't see this ever ending. Beautification, I asked the question to the committee, do you ever see, is there an exit criteria? We define when we are done. And I think the candid comment back, which is probably as accurate as I've heard, was, it may never end. There will always be opportunities to enhance, to make it better, to improve, and if that's the position then, I'd just hate to drain the RDA fund as we're doing that in those areas that we have, if there's a way we could in fact team up together and achieve both our goals in Economic Development as well as Beautification. So I just didn't read in your notes that that was an item, and therefore I wanted to make that point in this meeting.
And I'd like to make my point on this also. I mean, the RDA fund's been sitting there for a long time, being unused for a stuff that we hope will come. Yeah, we've done, helped to clean up, take a roof off here, paint a building there, but we know that the park is going to be a solidified, legitimate part of Roy City, going to make it a great park for the citizens. And by beautifying it, it just enhances that more and brings more people, not just Roy citizens, into that park area, because we are going to make it a great park. So I just see that as being positive, just go ahead and get it done anyway. That's a discussion we're going to have at a later time.
Well, and I think the reason this came up, I think the last time the committee met, when we talked about the property at the RDA, was because we were looking at America First, and we thought, in the context of you saying work with the companies that are coming in, we felt it was maybe important to say to America First, if you're going to develop that 1900 West frontage...
What part of the...
To put the streetlights in there, make that part of the development from now on, so that when we get the companies coming in, that, you know, the Public Works Department says, well, one of the requirements are when you're putting water lines and everything else, is to plan on putting these decorative lights out front. And so that was one of our goals, and that's the reason the whole thing came up, was to think about the developments that are coming in and having that as a requirement, if you're on the 1900 West frontage, to go ahead and put those lights in to save the city money, you know?
Well, I agree, Kathy. I mean, it was a foregone conclusion, the 1900 from north to south was in fact going to have the opportunity to see this portion of the beautification. The change took place when in fact the beautification says, let's do something with the cul-de-sac's, or excuse me, let's do something with the roundabouts. And now the decision is, how about doing something around North Park? So it's evolving, and all I'm saying is, is that there is a limited amount of funding in that RDA, and where we're trying very hard to fundamentally bring business in, and we may have to entice them by simply says, we'll do a portion of that, you know, maybe we fix the roof, maybe we gut the building. That may very well be the tipping point by which the company will step up and say, hey, we'll do this and make that kind of commitment. But I don't think we can make that commitment if there's no funds there, and we've got to be...
No, that's why I put in there, because after I talked to the city manager, and he, you know, echoed the fact that this is what the Economic Development Committee wanted to do, and he was, you know, wanted to make sure that there was no decision yet until you guys had looked at it and said, what are the future plans for Economic Development?
Exactly.
That's why it says that in here, and we understand that you're looking at other things, but, you know, let's maybe talk about how we can maybe do this in the future and make it incorporated in.
Well, I agree.
Be RDA funds or contingency funds, either way, I think it's just something we should get done.
And the other side of it is to say, you know, would we want to fund North Park? Would we want to prepare North Park on that west side, the new one, to put those decorative lights in there? Do we want to fund that as part of the project?
Maybe so, but you'd agree with me is, is if we sell the... Maybe so, but you'd agree with me is, is if we sell the, to America First, the property, is there funds available in that particular amount of money to be able to accommodate that part? And there might very well be. I'm just cautious about RDA because that really is the only funding that Economic Development at this point can focus on and use that money then to really target bringing businesses in. And all I'm suggesting is, is that rather than just suggesting that we in fact use RDA, I ask that to be two parts. Let's get the two committees on the same page, and let's make sure we're working together to make sure it's a common goal. And if that's right and it makes sense, we can benefit as the economic, the city beautification can benefit, then it's right for the city. I just, but we're going to draw from the same pot, and we have some things we want to do.
Right, and that was why it was just a suggestion to look at and to think about, as that. Because that is not in our budget, it's not part of our budget, it's just a thought out there.
I know.
You know, I like that I'm here and on this conversation. And I think that's the key, is that we need to get the two committees together and share what the Economic Development's got coming down the pipeline and how it fits in with what the Beautification Committee is looking at to beautify those things. And then that's meshing together.
And this committee's been together, I mean, we, a couple of years now? Well, it started when I first got put on council. Mayor came to me and says, I want you to do beautification. I was like, am I planting flowers? And, you know, so it has evolved over the years since it started, basically from nothing to what we have got it to today, to be able to get some funds, to be able to start beautifying the city. And so now that we have these efforts in place and we've started with an actual committee, with a budget to be able to start doing some beautification around the city, that, yes, Bob, exactly what you're saying, it's good to have the economic, you know, development together. It was not something that we thought of when we've had our beautification, you know, meetings. And so I'm glad that you have brought that to our attention. And yes, if there is development coming from the economic, your meetings, that we need to mesh the two together, it's all for the same goal and we're all for the same team. And so it needs to, you know, yes, we need to work together.
Okay.
Um, Gally, how are you coming?
Oh, I just was going to finish with the parking lot over at the trail. And I guess that's in the budget this year. And so we wanted to just put maybe another one of the signs and some benches and that in there for people to be able to sit, you know, there and whatever they need to do.
Are you anticipating then that that will be completed before snow flies?
I don't think so, that's next spring.
The spring?
Yeah.
Steve, just to make sure we get a site plan.
And so then I've just got the budget in there for those individual items that we talked about. So that's pretty much all we did, all of that. Council member Bee Craft is looking into a grant for the markers, the historical markers.
And so. I'll go over that in just a sec.
So that's the last thing.
I had one of the founders yesterday that talked to me about our signs, our Roy City sign that says, "Established nineteen thirty-seven." He said, "That's not right. We were incorporated in nineteen thirty-seven. Roy became Roy in eighteen ninety-four. That was established, that's when it was established." So we need to change that from "established" to "incorporated." I don't know what it's going to cost, but we probably ought to take care of it. Got to keep him happy.
Moving forward.
Just chill.
Just make the worst decisions all, I think it just not worth all the cost, go back in. It was established, incorporated.
Yeah, okay. I passed out to you a copy of rough draft of what we're going to do on the historical signs. I'm meeting with Amy the Monday after Roy Days. And we'll get going on the grant, that hopefully there's a couple of grants out there that we may not have to pay through for city funds for this. So that'll give you an idea of what we have in mind and where are they going to be. They're going to be right where it happens, so.
And then just a couple of other, Bob just had some questions and stuff. So I just wanted to kind of like answer them and stuff. A couple of questions he had was about what else do we envision? Like he says, this has evolved from basically nothing. So it's where we have gotten together and just talked about different places in the city that we feel, or different things that we would be able to afford to be able to do to just start to update our city a little bit, you know, in different areas. We are always looking for suggestions from any council member or any citizen out there that feels that there's something that they feel that might be able to, you know, help us or something they might think. We've looked at not just nineteen hundred, you know, that is our main thoroughfare, you know, through the city. But we're also looking at thirty-five, you know, down by Camps area and things like that, you know, to start looking at other areas in our city to be able to improve and to change. You also asked about businesses and residents cleaning up their yards and spaces. A year ago, two years, half ago, two years ago? We did have a meeting where we invited all the businesses. It was put out in their bill, in their business renewal license, to come to a meeting so that we could talk with them about having these businesses kind of buy in to our beautification efforts and what we envision the city to be and to have them incorporate and work with us. We only had a couple of businesses show up. So it was, that to us was a little heartening that those businesses didn't feel the importance of coming. So if that is something that we are going to do, it's really going to have to be a door-to-door thing to talk to businesses and to put some more effort into it that way. Because we tried and we just didn't get the response that we needed. It's always out there for residents and stuff to be able to know that, yes, beautification efforts are out there and to also, you know, take an effort for your area too. That is, that is also, it's their property and also their rights to do what they want. But we do hope that all citizens kind of buy into a beautification effort, you know, for their own piece of land. Marge did answer the question that we don't see this ending anytime soon. I think there's always the ability for us to always improve with any part of our city at any time. I don't think this is something that we want to stop doing. I think as the city changes, if we have businesses come in and nineteen hundred and a portion of it changes, and some of those businesses are gone and something new happens, then our beautification efforts are going to change depending on what those areas look like. So I'm actually really proud, and Marge on I, from when the mayor first said, I want you to be on the Beautification Committee, and there's basically no money, and here you go, and I'm going again, and we're just planting flowers around out here. To what we've been able to accomplish now, I feel very proud with what we've been able to do. And I think, just as the mayor, you have said, you've gotten a lot of comments from citizens out there with our efforts, and they can see us trying. I think that's the thing, is I think if citizens can see us making an effort and trying to improve our city, then it makes everybody, hopefully it just kind of snowballs and makes everybody just want to grasp that vision and just help overall just to make our city the best it can be. Again, I'd just like to just say again, if we're all working for the same team, for the same city, and working together with the economics, it makes sense. It was not something that we even thought about, so I'm glad that you brought it to our attention. And anything that, a combined joint meeting or anything to be able to make the process easier and better for any business that we have coming to the city, I think is worth it.
Good, I agree.
Ladies and gentlemen, the purpose of creating these two committees was to improve our city. The appearance of our city, to bring businesses to the city. Years ago, there were requirements when they built the Hermans Marketplace Plaza, they built the Albertson Shopping Center, that they put grass. We didn't want the concrete coming tear up to the sidewalk as it does in many other cities. We wanted to have firms and some green space between the property lines and sidewalks and the streets. If you notice as you go into cities that are beginning to deteriorate and lose businesses and out of the downtown areas and out of the local areas and you find the housing begins to lose value and deteriorate, if there isn't some plans in place. So the whole intention of this is, yeah, we need to work together as a council, the committees. We have the Economic Development Committee in place. We have the Beautification Committee in place. And the Beautification Committee has kicked off and got started. And the Economic Development is working very, very hard to bring new businesses and businesses to Roy and retain the businesses that we have. But if you let the city deteriorate, it will deteriorate and people will leave, businesses will leave because the traffic is not going to be here. I've had several business people in the community comment about the lighting project. And in fact, I've had police officers talk to me about, it makes it highly visible as they're patrolling downtown now, they can look onto the, into the background, and the background is lit up, and they can see things back there they haven't seen in the past because of the new lights and things that have gone on there. So it's very, very much worthwhile. And I think you're right. We've started something that will continue on. Next area I want to look at is, as we come off fifty-six hundred, how do we beautify those areas coming off fifty-six hundred, or off the interstate into our city?
And we've talked about that area too. That's something that we're kind of waiting on. We've heard a lot with Hillfield and UDOT and everything, like kind of fixing both of those on and off ramps, you know, like what they're doing in Clinton area. And it's something on their radar, so it's hard for us to start there and maybe something being torn down. So that is something that is on our back burner, is on our list of things to look at when they get going on that freeway entrance. So it's on our radar.
Yeah, and with that, that's an excellent point. As we know, Mayor, we've got UDOT now looking at that Environmental PAC study on fifty-six hundred starting next year. That is really a big plus. Connecting that to J.R., our plan to put a transportation plan in place with our strategic plan. I mean, everything is really coming together effectively to address a lot of that downtown area, but more importantly, some of the traffic constraints that we're facing in the city. And the plan that UDOT does have is that they will renovate that particular area. And in doing so, much like I think they're doing right now at the Clearfield Sunset Gate, it'd be nice to have that part done and then move in with whatever you think needs to do to make it more attractive. So, yeah, I think we're getting there.
Is that it for the Beautification Committee? Marge, Colonel? Thank you, thanks for the work done. Next item, public comments. Anyone in the public like to address the council this time on any issues? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
I'm Kaylaan Blakesley, twenty-nine seven west three, twenty-five south. I live in Halburn. And you talk about the beautification, but my neighborhood's never looked worse. It's terrible, we, me and other neighbors have called and we've never had any response to certain issues, tarp's around carports. One of our neighbors finally called the fire station and said, isn't this a fire hazard? And out of the three homes that have tarp's, one was removed, the other two have still been. We've kind of just given up. You know that probably multiple people have called about a certain house in our neighborhood lately. And even at that, yeah, they have the right to do what they did. But even if that, you know, the city drives by, there are so many violations to this house, but yet none of them have been addressed.
That's something that falls within our code enforcement?
I know, but they don't do anything. We have called multiple times.
We chatted yesterday, and I think we've got some things now that we'll hopefully move it. May not change the color of the house, but the rest will be.
And it's like, you know, cars that have been sitting on that first ever. And why do we have to constantly tattle on our neighbors? We don't want to, but I live in Roy, drive by all of these every day. You can't tell me that the people that aren't, can't do something about these. And I've lived here for thirty years, and when I moved into my neighborhood, I was like the youngest person. And I've watched eighty-year-old people take better care of their yard than the new people that are moving into my neighborhood. And I think that, you know, it's great, we beautify nineteen hundred and stuff, and so you think, oh, this might be a great city to move in. But you drive through the neighborhoods, and I have seriously considered in the last month moving. And I find my house is paid for, I plan on staying here forever. But I'm definitely taking it into consideration.
Andy, do we need to, you know, we have our code enforcement, he goes out there and he works very, very hard diligently trying to resolve these issues. Is there ways, and maybe we need to upgrade some of our ordinances in the city?
What we can do, if there's other ordinance violations, in fact, Marge came by the office yesterday. And so I talked to myself and Steve, and Mike's going to get on that. In fact, I'm going to take a drive by as soon as I can. So I, hopefully, hopefully I can get over there tomorrow too. But if there's some other violations other than, you know, colors of houses, that's hard to regulate. But I also talked to our Assistant City Attorney yesterday, and we're thinking, well, let's just check out whatever else there may be that exists there. So we'll get on to that and look into that, and let's discover whatever we can. When it comes down to coloring houses, you're pretty much, it's, in fact, if, on the street where I live, I've got a blue one and a pink one.
You know, it's not even necessarily about the color of the house, you know, the quality. You know, the spray paint, the van, one hundred percent, the LOL FUs in the windows.
Now, some of those things, what I want to do is look at the legality of some of those. I have not seen that house, and I want to take a look at it and.
But even, I don't want to even just talk about this one house. Like I said, we've had neighbors that, they got a call on because they had, you know, trashy water. So they just have a problem. I mean, it's had it up for ten years now that, I'm just sorry, they're just trying. You know, it just feels like after a while, you just, you feel like this bad person because you want your neighborhood to be nice, but the value of my home falling down, it's losing money.
If we can get the address, if you ever have places you want looked into and you can bring the address to us, those places, we'll be more than happy to send somebody out.
But that's it.
Boy, if you know Steve's house, you'll get the address.
I know that these two houses have been called before. They have warnings before. They, but there's this final step missing. I think that maybe you give all the warnings and the fine that you want.
You can bring them into, you can bring them into the court.
It's still there.
It'll be the next step.
Yeah, you know, so I don't, I think, if we're in Oldbury.
I think every neighborhood I have, you know, it's probably not that bad. I have not seen this home either. But it is hard, because you're right, it's hard to calling the neighbors. And I think everybody, I've got one in my neighborhood that's saying that the weeds are sky high. You know, and it's really, it is hard. And you hope that you take pride in what you have, and you want to have everybody to say, have that same pride in their home, in their yard. And then that pride hopefully makes us, as a city of Roy. But that's hard to teach, you know, and hard to do unless you really, you know, we've got to just get our code enforcing and stuff in place and in a good, in a good place to be able to make sure that we are handling these circumstances in a timely manner.
Sure. And if I could just reiterate that point, I honestly believe there are two groups of people out there in this category. One would be is those who just absolutely are going to be rebellious and they're making a point. And it's hard to change that emotion or that frustration they're experiencing, whether they don't like their neighbors, whether they don't like the city, it's hard to say. And there are freedom of speech issues that you start violating when you start to say you can't have the color of your house that way. But there's also another group out there, and I've seen them, and I have talked to them, who fundamentally can't change it. They don't have any resources, they don't have family, okay, around to help them. And so I think the other part of this, Mayor, and it's a conversation, I think the Beautification Committee can also help spearhead. We're going to here at the end of this month, we're going to bring hundreds of youth to the rally. And we've been doing that for years now, with the sole purpose. now with the sole purpose to simply take ownership for the city and they're going to clean it. And whether it be in the parks or whether it be somewhere else, the bottom line is is that this is going to be a rally cry and there's a lot of activity, a lot of, a lot of fun and there's a big group of people who do that. Now, we're doing that across all of the city elements, but could there not be at least some sponsoring of the city to help facilitate an idea that says, why can't we get these churches at their local areas? Why can't we get these communities at their local areas to say, would you be willing to help us in this endeavor? To the point that simply says, we are aware of an elderly member of our, of our Roy City residency who cannot move that stuff out of their front yard. They just don't have the means to do that. And maybe if we can rally some volunteer help with some incentives, maybe there could be a group with young men or young women or both who would be willing to go up there and says, we're willing to help. Now, there is a large portion who will never let that happen. But trust me, I have come across in the neighborhoods, people who says, I'd love to help, but they don't have anybody who can help them because the process is not in place. Maybe a little volunteerism, maybe a little pride, maybe a little something to help stimulate that. And if that means you give them a two-day or five-day punch pass to go up to the aquatic center to help them, there's some things we can do to beautify this city. And I think it starts not only on 1900 in these areas, but Mayor, I also think it starts in the people's homes. And those who fundamentally choose not to, then let the courts deal with it. Let the code enforcement office process work. The codes are clear, the ordinances are clear.
They are not working, these people are not.
They're not enforced. There's a difference in, they exist today, they are absolutely enforced.
You were issued citations and not paid that turned into warrants for their arrest and stuff like that.
What they're not doing is they're not having the enforcement and that's a penalty. And I'm not so sure, to be honest with you, that maybe what they fundamentally do is they just simply says, if you don't do it, we'll send some people in and we will do it for you and then you get the bill. I don't know the answer to that, but the solution really is to get compliance with the ordinance. And right now, we have a lot of people who are not. But those who are not, they can't do it for themselves, what do we do? And that's where the city has to step up.
Is it the ones that are more than capable of?
I'm sorry?
I know, and that's sad.
Well, you should single out.
Oh, I agree. Trust me, I.
And that's what happens by people calling and complaining about this one or that one. It should be, it needs to be fair. If you're going to complain about a car parked here, then you got to complain about a car parked here. If you can't have weeds there, then none of those other people can either.
I will tell you, there are going to be people and there are people who are just simply not going to comply. That is a choice.
And you're losing Roy City because of those people that will.
And I don't disagree with that either because people simply says, I can't live with this any longer, I don't want to live around it.
You're attracting more people than the grassier looks, you're attracting more people that will do the same thing.
But you would agree with me, if the ordinances basically say they have to mow their lawn and tear down the weeds and it does say that, and that was enforced, would that make it just a little bit better?
It would be great, it would be enforced, but it's not, that's what I'm saying.
I heard that, I heard that.
It is not being enforced.
Okay, then here's the, here's the discussion. The discussion then the city has to look at, is there not enough code enforcement officers? Is the issue is not the code enforcement officers? The fact is, we're not issuing the tickets. Is the issue not the fact we're not making the tickets, but we're not taking them into court and have them stand accountable?
And probably that because for the ones that I know of, they have been taken and multiple times and multiple warnings, so there's a point, I think that probably is why.
Then we take it to the final step and we fix the problem. And I don't know how else to do that for those who choose not to want to do it. But by the same token is, we can't simply ignore the law of the land and the law of the land is clear. So the point is, is either you don't have the law or you fundamentally say, I'm going to hold to the law and hold people accountable to that. And I think your point would be is we're not holding people accountable to that. That can be fixed. That can be fixed.
I think the bottom line is, we did have somebody go out there yesterday, we've gathered information, we changed the, some of the ordinances just recently that will hold these people more accountable. They're no longer getting second, third, fourth chances. They get one chance, they're going to end up in court if they don't comply. And I think that's the steps we're taking right now. So if you don't see a change within the next couple of weeks, please let our city manager know and we'll follow up on it.
And like I said, is this not just this one?
I know, I drove out there, I drove out there and looked at that whole street and I, that's the first thing I did was looked around, not just at his house, but the houses around him. I went, man, I wouldn't want to live on this street either, you know? So I understand exactly what you're saying.
It's amazing, we have, how to put the water and things, yet you drive by a lot of the homes and they've had nice grass in the past, now it's dried out and the grass is dying. And we try and enforce that, okay, but you have to understand there's, there's so much that the officers can do out there, just like on traffic. They can be out there enforcing the laws, but if they come to court and the judge says it's $150, they pay the $150, they go on their merry way and so eventually it has to, the penalty has to increase enough that it motivates those people to say, oh, it's getting too expensive for me at this point to continue the behavior. So, you know, it's, it's a society problem that I don't think we had many, many years ago, but people used to buy a house, they took care of the house. Today, they buy a house, they live in the house.
Is there bigger investment in those?
Yes, it is. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move on. Mr. City Manager, your report.
Mayor, Council, thank you. I'd like to start out with a couple of announcements. Here we have the grand opening for the pickleball courts. Travis would like to schedule that for August 8th at 6:00 P.M. We have the landscaping done and the sod is in, it looks really great. I met this last week with a representative from Waste Management who is our contracted sanitation hauler. We have some concerns about recycling. We don't have enough people recycling in Roy City. And what that is going to do is actually push us into a more expensive rate bracket. So even those who don't recycle, your trash rates will go up because there's not enough, because what they can do is they can sell those commodities that are recyclable and that brings your bill down. It basically helps subsidize the rest of the operation and right now, we do not have enough people recycling in Roy.
Can we put something in the newsletter or something about the, you know, the benefits or purpose of recycling? I know we've done it in the past.
Waste Management has education materials that we can include in, in our next newsletter. I've discussed with them the possibility of making at least City Hall a education ground, if you will, for recycling, having visible recycling and trash bins that educate people on this is what you can recycle here at City Hall and also a home.
Yeah.
To help them better understand it's a really easy connection between here and there.
Do they need to see in the newsletter or wherever, website, whatever, what it's going to cost them extra because of?
I can find that out.
Well, for me, we got a conflict in information, okay? We got a business, Waste Management is saying, hey, we're going to charge you more fees because you're not doing enough recycling. Yet we have the county over here saying, hey, the waste agent says recycling's not worth it, it's not worth the money, it's not bringing in anything. So you got two office stories, it's like, okay, which one's real, which one's the truth? What's going on? Just making that point.
Yeah, no.
It's a good point, too.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things, you know, during the WACOG meetings, these items get discussed and I've heard the county's side of the story that as the recycling goes down, if it just goes into the regular garbage, it costs us more money because they have to raise the tipping fees at the county to process that. The waste management program is that, you know, they have the separate containers that they put it in and they're taking it to another entity now and processing it. The price of these materials really fluctuates in the marketplace. A lot of this gets shipped to China or overseas for processing and they control the cost of those items. It's not controlled by the people that are picking it up and dumping it. So I encourage the people of Roy to help us develop. The least or the most effective is cutting the tipping fees at the transfer station. If Waste Management picks just up the refuge and hauls it into the, there, that's done. The place that they're hauling it to now, they dump the recycling and it's recycled and taken care of, so that can help somewhat. But we have a low rate of recycling in Roy City, so it's costing all of us because that's going into the landfill and the prices go up as they go in, the tipping fees for the county goes up with the amount of waste that's coming in there.
Yeah, it's all about negotiation with Jay, with Waste Management. Also, I believe we kind of saw this coming on when we left the dumpster fee, just the way it is, we didn't increase or decrease that way. If this prices did go up, we could hopefully consume the increase without an increase to the citizens. So that's also a possibility still out there. Is that correct, Kathy?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay.
For a while.
Right, for a while.
So we, have we dropped below 75% participation?
We just lost 67. I was trying to get at the information time to go out with your whole newsletter, but I didn't get it. So we lost 67 and I don't know if that drops us below. Waste Management has been working with us a little bit, so we may be just, you know, a little bit, teeny bit below that and they haven't actually raised our rates. I don't know what Jay might have heard from them the other day, but I know we're teetering on right there. So at any point in time, you know, are they going to be nice and just leave us at the 75% rate or do we eventually get dropped down to the 50% rate?
Yeah. My only concern is, is that I know Waste Management doesn't like me to say this to them, but the fact is, is they got a poor marketing approach. People are rebellion, rebellious against this idea of recycling oftentimes because the perception is, is that they're using all the recycling as a profit and they don't understand the process well enough. And so I have neighbors of mine that I've tried to convince them and they absolutely will not get a recycling can because they honestly believe that the recycling is a profit for Waste Management and they're thus not willing to want to pay for their profit. So it's really a marketing, they're not, the story's not clear and that's the confusion. And oh, by the way, we don't take recycling out to Weaver County now. We take to that little company that's on the way out there and they basically take all of our recycling material and they take it all for free. And so the bottom line is, is that they don't charge Waste Management for that. So there's a real opportunity for Waste Management to market this. And if I see Lance, if he's still involved in this.
It's Beth Olbrich.
Is it? Okay, Dennis Beth. And I talked to her on the phone one time too. Then I think the challenge got to be is, let's find a way to get this message out because it's really not clear and I, and my fear is that people are just getting wound up on this thing and they really shouldn't. We need clear information to help them. Because I think Dave's points right on. We don't know. We read the paper, one side of the story that says one thing, we hear something else that's different. It's hard to really understand in this, in this mess of information about what is really the truth and what's not. And they need to provide that truth because right now it's, I can't convince people, even on my own block, to get into the recycling program and they will not.
Well, they need to probably disclose what it costs for their driver to pick, to drive there for the gas.
Exactly, exactly.
And then if there's a net revenue that they get in from that, show how we end up with $3 fee a month. You know, I mean, I agree, maybe there's a way to show all of their costs that are incurred and then are they getting revenue somewhere? You know, I don't know.
I don't know.
Something like that might be helpful for people to see. It does cost for that truck to drive to your house to pick everything up. You know, it's not free.
And the mayor is absolutely correct. The market, the foreign markets are basically not taking as much recycling in large part because there's not a demand for it. And so Waste Management told me last year, they lost millions of dollars because the market shifted. So there's just a lot of confusion out there and to fix this is to, is to provide information and it's just not there. So I don't know who's supposed to carry that banner. I can't. I think the experts need to. So Jay, in the course of your conversation, it might be wise to simply ask Waste Management to simply get, get the story out because I think it's part of the problem anyway.
During the conversation with Waste Management we had, we've invited them to write articles, help us to educate the public in our newsletter that we can send out and they can have a section there to help us educate the folks what the market is and what they should put in the can, what they shouldn't put in the can. How, you know, you put things in there, you contaminate it so it can't be used. So she's agreed to do that. When we talked to her the other day, she said she will provide some, some articles for our newsletter.
Waste Management's always been a good partner with Roy City, willing to do what we ask. Can we just sit down with Beth for what we need to add to come to great records?
Yeah. We just got to get the message out to the public because they're just, they're just not sold. And if we're down to the 75 mark, the next drop is 50% and as you stated, the cost is going to go up. We're all going to bite that bullet and anyway, I'm not so sure we need to.
Jay, do you have anything more?
Nothing else, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor and Council reports. I'm pleased with the direction that the city's moving. I think we've done some very good things through our beautification committee and the Economic Development Committee has made an impact. Probably the greatest impact that we can make is to be salesman for our community, back to our citizens. You know, we met, met, met and finally the owner of Ocean Mart come over and asked to meet with the Economic Development Committee and us folks before they came to Roy City. And that was the result of citizens getting involved in the community and going to the owner of Ocean Mart, some of the Asian folks at Reuben Roy and from the church out there, the witness church got together and went down and sold them on Reuben Roy City and taken over the old Albertson building. And so the owner of that business came up and met with us and said he would like to come here. And the result of citizens getting involved and we sell a message to our folks out there that we can do as a council and as an economic development team and a beautification team, we can try and sell that message, but we have to go out and sell it first to our citizens and get those folks involved in what's going on. And you know, we, I talked about the cemetery, you know, people in Roy City have said that they'd like to have a cemetery, but when you say, would you like to help us pay for the cemetery? I, you know, not really, but I guess I will if I die and buy a plot over there, then I'll pay someone. And so the approach that we have to take is, if we want a cemetery, there's things that we have to do to get that cemetery focused. And we're going to move forward and try and simply get another cemetery here in Roy City. That's on the agenda. We want to move forward with that. So I want you to know that, tell your friends and neighbors, you know, we come to budget meetings sometimes and we got one or two folks here and tonight we have some attendance and some nights we're talking to empty seats out there. So get the folks involved in the community. It's not only our community, it's our citizens' community. And let's help sell this community to businesses. We've got great grocery stores, now we have to go out and try and bring in some other types of businesses and we're working on that. The Economic Development Team has been Councilman Hilton and Councilman Dan Dewey and they work very, very hard trying to bring this thing together along with the staff. So it's a tough sale, but if we'll support the businesses that come to Roy, they will come and they will remain at Roy. So that's, I'll get off of the banstand and Council, go ahead.
Okay, so Roy Days, hopefully we're all excited and going to be able to attend all the events. So on the agenda, we have added her staff excitement, the softball.
game.
We'll see how excited they are when it's finally go to 3:00 tomorrow.
Hopefully last night we've got our teams together and ready to go. That's tomorrow night. And then Thursday, we've got the carnival going on and then Friday, salmon bake and then Saturday. And so hopefully everyone's got their shirts. We are rocking neon this year. Everyone's going to be able to see us from everywhere. And if you want to, I'm going to be having a scrunchie. I'm going to rockin' out my 80's attire for, leg warmer, no, no belt. Stay off that leg warmers, sorry. But we are going to be rocking. So if you want to put on your 80's gear, Bob's going to be driving in a car from the 80's. So that will be great. Just remember, we need to be up at the Hells by 30-ish. You want us at 30, 30-ish?
30.
Okay. Yeah, parade starts at 9:00. So we need to be up there. And so we're going to be throwing a lot of things plus candy and stuff out too. Do you guys have any questions or anything about everything that's going on? You've got your, your plan?
I have one question from a citizen. Says a firework start at dusk. Would you say it's at 10?
It's usually 10.
What's it going to be?
And the program that says 9:30, historically, historically, we've shot them off, uh, right around 10. We've had a few years where because of the weather's been coming in, that we've shot them off at 9:30. That's kind of why we say 9:30, but truth be told, they're historically shot off around 10:00 p.m.
10:00.
Okay. I do have one more thing. So with Roy Days and our budgeting, it is where there's overtime that's adjusted for, you know, the staff and the great staff we have that put in hours during our week of Roy Days. And with that budget, we do ask each of the departments to make sure, you know, they give us their allotted, you know, overtime expenses and things like that. And that budget was put together and those hours were put together prior to our salary increase. So with that, it's going to be a possibility that we could pretty much stay within the hours that the staff, the departments has, has have given us for their, for their staff and their participation in Roy Days. But it might be to where we might need to adjust the budget a little bit to accommodate for those hours, those extra hours because of the wage increase that we just put into place.
Right. Thanks.
So I want to make sure that I've got Council's approval, that when the time comes that we can make those adjustments if necessary. It will just make, because we're in the middle of Roy Days, it will just make us that are planning it and doing it a little bit at ease knowing that we could put, they can put their best effort into, you know, into Roy Days this week.
Oh, no problem.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? More?
Yes. I have to help judge floats and the entries and that for the parade that morning. So keep an eye on my founders until I can get there and get them taken care of. So a lot of them said, where do I go? So watch for them. We're down to 10. We have one that the doctor said, no, you shouldn't be out there. So we are at 10 right now. So. And then we also have the art show. Awards will be at 11:30 over at the Black Box Theater at the library. Youth Council?
What day you say?
Uh, Saturday, 11:30 right after the parade.
Because I was not here Saturday.
I noticed that.
Is there criteria that I can go over and say, it's too late?
It's done. It's done. It's done.
That's okay.
Thanks, guys.
And the youth, the youth council, we've got three for this upcoming year already. So we'll have them ready to go by September. So.
Interesting. We had a great, the mayor did say we had a great Ms. Roy pageant. Brooke Bailey was proud of Ms. Roy and I think she's going to represent Roy really well this next year. She's a really cute girl. And the platform is kindness. So she wants to be able to bring the... Yeah, kindness just to everybody. And so she's going to go around to the schools and stuff and just, just talk about being kind to, you know, to others. So I think she'll be a good representation for Roy.
It was a wonderful pageant.
It was. It was really wonderful.
Folks have put that together.
Yep.
Standing ovation.
Uh huh. Yep.
Anything else, Council? Okay. Next item on the agenda is a motion to hold a closed council meeting to discuss character, professional competence, physical or no health of an individual. We have a motion to go into closed meeting.
Motion to go into closed meeting.
And we've got to include in that motion where that closed meeting would be...
Closed meeting held in the...
Administrative conference room?
Yeah, administrative conference across the hall.
That's a roll call vote, ma'am.
Well, we have to.
Oh, yeah. We have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember DePoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Dandoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Beecraft?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We will adjourn from our meeting here and please open your conference.